We'll open the meeting for Wednesday, September eighteenth at six o'clock or six oh one for the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, this is a hybrid meeting, so we are being recorded and there are folks online. So, uh, wanted to recognize, uh, hopefully I did in July, but, uh, Karen Peterson from Williston, I believe you were on, uh, in July. Thank you. Yes. And we, we recognized you then as a new member, uh, sort of swapping with Andy Watts of, uh, uh, who is now the alternate and you are the primary, uh, for, uh, Williston. So, uh, and then Essex Junction has, uh, Kristen. And, uh, Kristen, did we get to you in July? I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah.
We did. Okay. And, uh, your last name, I'm a little confused. What is your last name?
It's Gil Day.
Thank you. It was the pronunciation. I was gonna add another syllable there, but, uh, thank you. So Kristen and, uh, Karen, welcome back. Thank you. So I'm gonna ask now for changes to the agenda, uh, taking particular note of our consent agenda item at number three. If anybody wants to weigh in on the paving issue there in Winuski, you'll have to ask us to pull it off the consent agenda. So, looking for any changes, additions, additions to the agenda. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, Chris, um, I, um, just we talked about it and somehow I let it slip off, but, uh, we have a new staff person to introduce to the board. Um, so I don't know when you want to do that, um.
Please, let's do it right now. This is introductions.
Okay.
We slipped into changes to the agenda. Everybody else, please ponder that point while we find out the new staff member.
Yeah, Maya.
Um, my name is Maya Belassa. I joined, uh, August fourth or fifth. Um, so about a month and fifth, about a month and a half now. Um, I'm originally from Asheville, North Carolina. Um, got my masters in planning at the University of Virginia and then moved up to, uh, Portland, Maine, worked there for the city for a couple of years. Um, and now I'm really excited to be here.
Well.
Welcome.
Welcome. And, and you're a planner, are you?
Yeah, sorry, planner. Yes.
Excellent. Uh, what are you working on? Uh, what have we thrown at you the minute you walked through the door?
You got the initial review of the Buels Gore Town Plan or Gore Plan, lucky person that she is.
Yeah, that was, um, a fun first project. I was, I saw your name Garrett, um, on the screen, which was fun to put a face to the email name. Um, also working on neighborhood development area, um, bylaw audits and kind of getting involved in the Burlington, our Plan BTV New North End project, um, sitting in on a lot of meetings with Dan and water quality and so many projects. It's hard to keep them all in my brain, but raise grant. Still just, yeah, it's a lot to know.
We don't need to run the list, but thank you. It's obvious that we've needed your assistance and welcome. Thank you for coming north and, uh, we obviously have given you everything from our deepest, darkest hollow there and, uh, uh, Beelze Core to the downtown of Burlington to contend with. So great. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's a beautiful county.
Mm-hmm. And especially these last two weeks with the weather, we feel like San Diego.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. So we'll back to, uh, changes to the agenda. Uh, anyone wish to speak up on that item? If not, uh, we'll move on to item two, public comment. Anyone here from the public would like to comment items that are not on the agenda? Not hearing anyone on that. We'll move to consent agenda item. So I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Chris, can we pause on the, uh, public comment? Uh, there's a couple folks here who are not board members that, and Patty Davis has raised her hand.
I'm sorry, Patty. I did not see that. Thank you, Charlie.
No, no, it was after you moved on, so.
Well.
Uh, Patty, you're muted.
That's okay. I took a while to find the hand signal. Um, yes, um, I'm just a resident of Essex. Um, I used to be on the planning commission. So, um, I, I really got interested in the whole planning aspect. So I, I loved hearing about this new member. That's amazing. Um, so it's, it's an educational experience, but I'm very, very involved, um, in our well-established Forestdale neighborhood in the town of Essex that's been established since nineteen seventy-seven as a residential, the largest residential, um, you know, subdivision in the town. Now, of course, eventually Essex Town wants to build a new center and I think that's great. It's wonderful. Um, I donated a lot of my pots, my flower pots to them, uh, guard, cause I'm a gardener. Um, so I'm supportive of that. Uh, my, my, I read through your, on page twenty-eight of all your minutes, you know, before this meeting at the top paragraph, they talk about the NPO, Met- Metropolitan Planning, you know, Metropolitan Transportation Planning, something like that. I don't have it right in front of me, but, um, and it talks, and my question is, how does the Regional Planning Commission, because you deal with all these towns, uh, deal regionally, transportation-wise, um, uh, if it doesn't coincide with existing transportation plans for an existing town such as Essex? Uh, the reason I'm asking this question is our two thousand fourteen, uh, transportation plan is still in in existence and, um, our, when a, when a, when a subdivision, uh, as large as a hundred and thirty homes, uh, is abutting a town highway, obviously the town has jurisdiction over that. But you as a region, Regional Planning Commission has, you're making a regional plan. So uh, my question is why i- isn't our town of Essex following the two thousand fourteen plan that states that, um, both primary and secondary arterials, even if it's a town road, if it's a secondary arterial, the rule is not to penetrate identifiable, identifiable existing residential neighborhoods and we are being penetrated by semi-trucks. And there are seventy-five of us within this subdivision that's very, very, very upset. So, um, I don't know if you can answer that question, um, or maybe give me a, a give, not me, but our Sand Hill Community Group a, uh, a resource that we can reach to, um, that maybe, um, uh, overlooks or not, I don't want to say overlooks our, our select board. But if the select board is allowing these trucks to use this road and the, the select board is not following the two thousand fourteen transportation plan that is existing, because it hasn't been changed, what can the Regional Planning Commission do if they oversee Essex?
I think that's clear. Um, obviously I don't think we're gonna get you an answer tonight. I'm gonna defer to Charlie who might, uh, tell us who would be best able to answer that question.
Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, maybe Charlie can answer it tonight, but I, it sounds a little more complicated than that.
Um, well, I think, uh, and, uh, hi Patty, nice to put a face with a name. I think, um, we've gotten a, a number of emails over the months from Ms. Davis, uh, on this issue, which, uh, staff has responded to, I think. Uh, but I think the short answer is we don't really have authority over the towns. You know, the towns, um, are not subordinate to the Regional Planning Commission. They're members. The towns make up our board.
Understood.
So, you know, we, uh, provide guidance and support. Um, and we also are able to provide federal funds. I think there's, um, to do studies and plans, uh, for our municipalities. And I think there's a project in our current, uh, program to do, to study this area and this issue, uh, with the town and the community. And I'm looking at Alani a little bit. Uh, she may have a little bit more detail on that, but, um, I'm not sure the status of that project, uh, or if it started yet.
That's okay, but I appreciate your answer. I, I didn't know if there was someone you could recommend in either the Ethics Committee or the Secretary of State. We, we don't really want to hire an attorney, but it's gotten that bad. They, we're talking large semi-trucks. There was an accident, accident five years ago and I, my background is medical research and a friend of mine who worked in the ER, someone got hit, uh, who, uh, the biker, just a, you know, bike racer type, not a mountain biker, but a regular biker, turning up Sand Hill Road, trying to, and he was in the right of way. He got hit. And he now is, um, after many surgeries, and this happened July two thousand nineteen. And he is in, um, uh, he has neurological, my background's neuroophthalmology, but he has neurological, um, deficit, um, permanently. He has permanent brain damage and he was in an, in an institution. So my, my, my brother who's coming to visit October second, can't even bike down Sand Hill. We live on Hillside Circle. Um, so it's a hundred and thirty homes that abut this road and it's a town highway. And in the manual, uh, you know, for, uh, the Public Works Manual, uh, you know, I, I researched, that's my background. And it states in the two thousand fourteen plan that you do not penetrate identifiable residential neighborhoods and all along Lower Sand Hill is a residential neighborhood. There are only thirty-nine homes on actual Sand Hill, but all of us that, you know, bike and run and, you know, are, are adjacent to it, it's affecting our lives and our quality of life and we don't want another accident. So that's the only reason I came to this meeting, but thank you so much. Um, if there is either ethics or would you recommend? I would love a, I would love a, a name.
Thank you, Patty. Charlie, uh, is there, uh, anyone, uh, perhaps Alani can follow up, uh, on the present status of the transportation plan?
And Dana also wants to.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just start, um, Patty, um, it just strikes me that the, um, the town should be following its, um, you know, its public works, long-term plan and that you should be getting some relief and some input from, on the local level here.
Oh, we're not. No, our whole group is not, but that's okay. Hey, we miss you, by the way. You were such a great planner for the town of Essex. I remember when you said you were in a snowstorm and I offered that you could stay at my house if you couldn't get home. So we miss you, but, um, no. Everybody's really nice there. This is not a personal thing, but what's happening is the new public wor- works director is not following with the old public works, Dennis Lutz, who has been there for years. And not only that, the last UPWP was done between Alan Martin and Stone, uh, in, um, Route fifteen and his name is Sai, S A I with CCRPC. He was the contact person, the consultant. So between Dennis and the consultant and Sai, S A I, the, the rule is, and I have it highlighted, that, um, that all the trucks are supposed to be using, um, Route fifteen onto Alan Martin. That's why they made extra lanes so that they could get to the, the SHIP with Saxon Hill Industrial Park. And they're not, they're coming from Lower Sand Hill. And that's the issue. And the town never answers me, doesn't answer, doesn't answer, doesn't answer. So we have a, we have a group. There's seventy-five so far, but I, there might be more by the time this UPWP is done. But if a Sai is, is, is the director again, that's wonderful, because he did the last study in two thousand sixteen. And, and there, and the town and Dennis Lutz, and the agreement was that all the trucks are supposed to come from the fifteen direction, use the circ, get off the interstate, use the circ, get on fifteen, come from Alan Martin to get to Thompson Drive until the new road is built by Al Senical, which I think he will build. I don't think it's Al. I think the town just doesn't want to make, maintain a new road, but that's just my personal, my personal opinion from everything I've been through. Anyway, thank you.
I saw a hand from Andy and, uh, Alani, maybe you wanted to.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna tell Patty that we do have a study in the current work program. Uh, we are trying to set up a meeting right now. Sai is managing that study and I.
Right, I like him.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Uh, and we're gonna be a meeting with the town to talk about the scope of this study and what we can do. And we're definitely gonna have public outreach with that and have some more meetings and talk about the issues and some of the solutions. So stay tuned, uh, we are just starting the process.
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Anything more on that? Okay. Appreciate it. You're, uh, talking to us, Patty. We'll move on to a consent agenda item number three. With approval. Uh, thank you, Mike O'Brien, and, and a second, please. Not everybody all at once. A second to Mike's, uh, motion, please.
Uh, this is Bart. I'll second that.
Thank you, Bart. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Anyone opposed or abstaining, please speak up. Okay, unanimous. Uh, let's go to item four, minutes of the July seventeenth board meeting that's in your packet. Uh, need motion to approve that, perhaps with changes. Barrett, thank you. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jackie. And, uh, discussion, changes. Anyone eagle-eyed enough to find the errors or people who were there that were missing or people who were missing that were there?
I have, uh, not sure we call it, yeah, well, some of it's more technical than others, but on line, uh, one sixty-two, um, given that this is the first time these, um, yeah, initials showed up in the minutes. Uh, if somebody was outside just reading these minutes, they wonder what the DHCD and the VLCT were. I mean, if, you know, so it's always nice. It would always nice to write out who it is for the very first time you see those initials in, in, in a, um, minute kind of thing.
In addition to BLURB.
Yes, exactly. But that, there was some earlier on the LR, so I didn't do that. And then, um, at the end of the sentence, it says links are included in the presentation. Should we put a link there where it is? Make it easier for people to go ahead and, and utilize it?
Uh, I think it would be nice if we could do that. Uh, I'm sure that's a level of detail. I'm not sure, uh, uh, if, uh, it, is Emma taking the minutes on that there? I don't want to have her work until midnight on this.
I know, but it's, it is nice to have the link if it's available.
This is.
It says links are available. I mean, so people are going, where's the link, you know, kind of thing, if you read it.
I, I think it would be prudent if we could do that. Charlie, is that something we could, uh, implement without too much difficulty?
I think we probably can. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you for the suggestion, Catherine. We'll take those as suggestions, not as changes, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then, uh, uh, there is one change that's on line two hundred. And you, it, it has, um, oh, it says, uh, again, we're talking about the transportation plan and, and the stats. Uh, were adopted separately from the regional plan in spring of twenty-three. Um, but there is, uh, a couple of, um, let's see, I have, there is a, the board adopted, the sentence starts, the board adopted the Metropolitan Plan and the economic, and they were adopted separately. Um, it should just, you know, get rid of the one, there's too many were adopted. Just say the, uh, the board adopted the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan separately from the regional plan in spring of twenty twenty-three. Rather than both.
Removing the second, uh, adopted.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. I think I understand. Everybody else understand?
Got it.
Uh, friendly amendment to change that, Mike O'Brien.
What?
Friendly amendment to make that change?
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, I thought that was you, the previous one. I'm sorry. Who made the?
Sorry. No, it was Garrett, I think.
Garrett, I apologize.
I know, easily confused, Chris, right?
Yes, I, yes. So, I'll accept.
One hundred percent good with it. I should have said when I made the motion with that it's by Catherine.
And Jackie, is all right by you?
Uh, yes.
Okay, hope you got that second right. Further discussion, further changes. Hearing that, I'll ask all those in favor to say aye or raise their hand. Aye. And anyone opposed or abstaining, please speak up. Okay, we're gonna move on to item five.
Sorry, Brad. Sorry, sorry, Brad Holden staying.
Brad is, is, uh, begging off on that abstaining. Thank you.
Miles wait, Miles wait, also staying. I was not at the meeting.
Very good. And you're welcome to participate in, uh, all the minutes voting, even if you aren't at the meeting, from my understanding. But, uh, thank you, Miles. Thank you, Brad. Uh, fiscal year twenty-five, Regional Board Member Committee Appointments, this is on page, uh, oh, gosh, what is it? Um, ten, I think, of your packet? And I want to draw attention to the fact that the committee appointments per the bylaws, the chair shall, with concurrence of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, establish and appoint committees and their members. And further Article eleven, all Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission Board members are encouraged to participate in a minimum of at least one standing committee. The chair may appoint ad hoc committees for a specific purpose with the, with the approval of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. Committee should include subject matter experts as needed to provide advice to the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission Board. So we have, uh, you noted in the packet, as I say, on, uh, page ten, a finance committee that is full. We have a board development committee that is looking for the potential of an additional member, as you see by the yellow blank spot. We have the Unified Planning Work Committee meeting, uh, committee, I'm sorry, Unified Planning Work Program Committee with a, um, vacancy. Uh, the TAC or the Transportation Advisory Committee seems to be full. The Planning Advisory Committee, where you get to talk with all the directors of planning and zoning with all the member towns, uh, might be a very attractive uh, blank that needs to be filled here by, uh, a board member. Uh, we have the Long Range Planning Committee, which, uh, is full. The LRPC Interest Group Reps, uh, which appears to have, uh, just one and it seems to be full. The Clean Water Advisory Committee is full. The Ad Hoc Brownfields Advisory Committee is full. The Ad Hoc All Hazards Mitigation Plan Update Committee is full. And the final one, uh, well, two final ones. We have the Basin Water Quality Council that is looking for an alternate to Miles.
Chris, um, we have a person to fill that seat, um, uh, from Burlington, uh, named Eleanor Walker.
Eleanor Walker?
Yep.
Okay. I apologize for folks who didn't speak up soon enough to fill that slot on the water quality on direct to lake.
There, there did not seem to be a lot of people standing in line for that one, so.
Well, if you enjoy the little trickles and streams that, uh, find their way to the lake that aren't in the major, uh, uh, rivers, then that might be your thing. So Lewis Creek hops to mind, in my mind. That would be one of those, uh, Basin Fives, Charlie.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
There you go. If you're a part of the Lewis Creek organization, it's in your wheelhouse. And then finally, we have, uh, the Equity Advisory Committee. We're looking for a CCRPC board member for Equity Advisory. Uh, and that meets monthly. The Unified Planning Work Program Committee meets maybe, uh, two or three times a year, Charlie, in January, February. Uh, the Planning Advisory Committee meets monthly and the Board Development Committee is in the process of meeting three times over, uh, September, October, November, for the purposes of revising our bylaws, but generally meets once a year. So one more time, again, I'm looking for four names or four people to step up. Uh, we have the Board Development Committee meeting, uh, once, twice a year, uh, presently in a heavier workload. Uh, the UPWP Committee, which is meeting, uh, two, three ti- three times a year, January, February. Um, and then we have the Planning Advisory Committee in monthly commitment and the Equity Advisory Committee in monthly commit. I'm gonna lay the floor open to see if there are anyone who can volunteer in the here and now.
I can do the equity, um, if, if no one else wants to do that. I think that was where Elaine was, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, I believe, I believe you're correct. And let me see if I can get this right. It's Kristen. C R I S T E N?
T I N.
T I N. I was almost there. As a Chris, I want to get this right. And Gil Day.
Yep, that's correct.
Very good. Thank you, Kristen. I very much appreciate that. Um, other names for the other three, four, three committees?
When does the equity, I mean, sorry, the Board Development Committee typically meet?
Uh, in general, we meet before the June meeting where we do the, the turnover of, uh, the whole board uh, or on the two-year cycle. Uh, so it's usually meeting hot and heavy in, um, March and April. I would say, is that about right, Charlie?
That's right.
Okay. So March and April. Uh, and the general use of the Board Development Committee is they say, say that at once a year. Uh, however, we're in the middle of revising the bylaws. So we're meeting this month and we're meeting next month. And, uh, if we can't get it wrapped in October, we'll have another one in November for the purposes of, uh, the bylaws.
Are there dates yet for those meetings?
There are. Uh, we have one next week on Tuesday where the, uh, with the bylaws, yes, Tuesday at five, five o'clock.
Okay.
And then one in October, Tuesday.
Pending copacetic dates with my travel the next few months, like, I would be happy to step up for that one.
Well, Karen, that would be lovely. Thank you. So working, Charlie? Yep. Okay, get that down. Uh, and Melanie Bruce, you have a hand up there?
Bruce has a question.
Well, I mean, this is, um, Bruce Wilson, and, um, I'm just wanna let the board know that since an exception of Equity Advisory Committee, I've been, I've been at every meeting, despite every meeting. So I'm just letting you know, I'm a big part of that.
Well, thank you. And, uh, we're pleased to be able to appoint, uh, Kristen Gil Day there. So, uh, the, the good news, Kristen, if I recall, is there's food at the meeting at a time and I haven't been into the office in a while, but I, next time I come in, I'm gonna be expected to feed, have a nice feed. That will be one of our draws to coming back into the Winuski office, I think. It's, Charlie's always been good about providing food. Okay, so we have Kristen, we have Karen. I appreciate that. We're still looking for Planning Advisory Committee and Board Development Committee. I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry. I put Karen under the UPWP. So Karen is under Board Development. Right. Andy Watts?
Andy Watts Essex, I'll do the UPWP if you'll have me.
I will certainly have you. Andy Watts. UPWP.
Yeah, make sure it says Essex, not Will, not most.
Essex it is, yes. The, the Andy Watts in Williston thankfully has stepped down as an alternate or stepped back as an alternate, not continue our, uh, confusion, but thank you.
Oh, I am having dinner with him next.
The Andy reunion. All right. And then last call for Planning Advisory Committee, the real nitty-gritty of, uh, land development regulations. Anyone?
Yeah, and I will note that that committee tends to be more of a afternoon, uh, committee, so uh, I think it's typically, I'm looking at Taylor, like, a, a Wednesday at like two thirty or something.
PAC is, yeah, second Wednesday of the month at two thirty, uh, two thirty to four.
So. No takers.
If, if you don't have anybody, can I volunteer for that?
Oh, you want to volunteer for that?
Well, I'm just saying, if, if there is any, is no one, uh, I, I imagine I could insert myself, yes?
Absolutely. Yeah, you, I guess you can appoint yourself.
Well. Sign me up. Noted. All right. Thank you. So we'll add Karen Peterson to, uh, for Development Committee. We'll add Andy Watts Essex Town to EPWP. We'll add Chris Shaw, the Planning Advisory. We'll add Eleanor Walker to Basin Water Quality Council, Basin Five. We'll add Kristen Gil Day to Equity Advisory Committee. Uh, do I need a motion for this, uh, with the concurrence of the, okay, so I'll look for a motion to make these appointments as written in the packet and as just noted for the additions.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Catherine. And a second. That's Garrett, I assume. Okay, thank you, Garrett. Dana, you're just a hair too slow. Appreciate it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining, please speak up. All right, unanimous. Thank you. Uh, we'll go to potential service transit changes. Uh, Clayton with us today or no?
Um, no, and I'm not sure why not. Um, so I've reached out to him to see if he's gonna plug in and maybe, uh, we can, uh, go to the next topic, uh, and hope that he shows up. So apologies, not sure what happened there.
Well, it was probably, he was trying to ride the transit to Winuski and.
Well, I saw, uh, I saw him a night or two ago in the town of Essex, so I, I, I know, Andy, did he make it out of that meeting?
Ouch.
He, he was a little bloody, yeah.
Well, I don't think he's come to South Burlington yet. I'm sure he would get a, um, well, warm reception here, either. Um, okay, we'll move on to item seven, Ecos Plan Update. Uh, I'll assume that's Taylor.
Thank you, Chris. If folks see my screen. Excellent. And let me, uh, I'll swap out of, you guys see the displayer mode, so I'll swap. There we go. So, hi folks, for those that don't know me, I'm Taylor Newton. I'm the Planning Program Director here at CCRPC. I manage, uh, the non-transportation, uh, part of the organization. Uh, and one of the things that I, I manage here is the development and maintenance of the Ecos Plan, which is our CCRPC regional plan. So today, just gonna provide an update on where we are with development of the plan itself. Um, for those of you that have been around for a while, you know, we've been working on the plan for a couple of years. Uh, we've had some big changes to legislation over that time period that, uh, we keep delaying to address, which is okay. Uh, in terms of where we are and what's happening this year, back in July, uh, we debriefed about some engagement we did specifically with underrepresented communities in Chittenden County. Um, and so that work was completed between January and June. Uh, we work with LRPC, our Long Range Planning Committee, to amend the plan to address what we heard during that outreach. Uh, LRPC met in August to talk through those changes. Um, I believe we're in a state where those are pretty much, those are finalized. Um, and off to the copy editor, sorry, not to the copy editor, off to the formatter, so the plan is actually being taken and sent to a formatter who's going to integrate a bunch of graphics, maps throughout the entire plan. And so by October, we'll have, uh, a draft that we have talked about potentially releasing to the public in draft form or not, haven't made the final decision there. Um, I think we're leaning towards no at this point in time, but we'll have it available. And then we'll also, uh, have a website specific to the Ecos Plan that we've been developing with a, a website developer out of DC called Blue Roster, uh, using the Arc Hub platform, which, um, is a platform that kind of seamlessly integrates interactive graphs and charts and maps, uh, using the Esri software, which is the, the mapping software that we use, ArcMap, uh, to develop maps for all of our projects. Uh, and so that'll be done in October. Um, and then, uh, what I really am going to talk to you about tonight is that we're going to start a whole another round of engagement. Uh, we've actually already started here this month related to the development of a new, uh, future land use map for the region and the development of, uh, municipal housing targets. And so this work that we're starting in September and that we hope to wrap up by June twenty twenty-five is really to implement the changes from Act One Eighty-One, the big Act Two Fifty bill that just passed this past session. And so this timeline puts us on a glide path to potentially, uh, adopt an updated Ecos Plan the end of twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six. I would probably put money on early twenty twenty-six at this point. Any questions on timeline? Hearing none, I'll, I'll move on. And so, uh, Act One Eighty-One that just passed in, in, in June, or really got passed, got vetoed, got overridden, um, it changes a lot about what needs to happen in terms of developing a regional plan and what needs to be in a regional plan. And so in terms of procedural steps, uh, the statute's been changed to require municipal workshops during the development of regional plans. Didn't used to be that specific. And it also requires that RPCs do meaningful participation uh, with our constituency. And that term meaningful participation is defined in, in the Environmental Justice Bill that was passed a few years ago. I will not try to define it off the top of my head, but it, in essence, really means you need to connect with people, you need to try, you need to explain what you're doing, what the impacts may be. The other big procedural change is that regional plans now, after the board adopts them, will move on, uh, for review by a new state land use review board. That board will approve our plan and the, as a separate decision, the actual regional future land use map. And so that kind of oversight of a state entity is new. And so we need to build that into our process in terms of adoption. Uh, the other new requirement is that the regional plan needs to talk about environmental benefits and burdens, which is also defined in statute. A lot of examples are also provided in statute. And so generally, we, we have to map environmental justice focused populations, which is defined in statute, and that we need to specifically focus on how changes to the regional plan may create environmental benefits and burdens for those communities. So we need to figure out how we're going to do that. And so over the course of the next year, we're going to determine how we're going to assess what are environmental benefits, what are environmental burdens, what are the changes particularly to our regional future land use map going to mean in terms of shifting those benefits and burdens? How do we better address those burdens? Uh, we also need to develop a new regional future land use plan that I've mentioned a couple of times. We have to do that in a standardized way uh, using ten different typologies that are established in statute. And so what that means essentially is that now CCRPC will be developing a regional future land use map that uses the same typologies as the Northeast Kingdom, the same typologies as Bennington County. But right now, we do it very, well, not very differently, but differently enough where it's comparing apples and oranges. And because of some of the regulatory relief that may come from adoption of these plans from Act Two Fifty, having this sort of standardization statewide will make it easier for the land use review board to understand uh, what's happening in our regions and really compare apples to apples. Uh, lastly, uh, housing targets, this actually, this requirement isn't from Act One Eighty-One, this requirement's actually from the Home Act the year before. And so the statewide housing needs assessment, which just came out, will have an appendix to it that'll be published later this fall that'll establish housing targets or really housing goals for each of the RPCs. And so what statute says is that each RPC has to take that goal and determine a way to disaggregate it down to the municipal level. And so staff here has already started to work with PAC, our Planning Advisory Committee, and some of those planning directors to figure out a way to fairly uh, disaggregate our regional target that is still forthcoming uh, to reflect the development patterns that, that, you know, we're, we're striving for here in Chittenden County. And so those are the big changes. Any questions on those? Hearing none, I'm going to walk you through the process that we're going to take over the next year. A little bit less than a year, hopefully. So step one is, is, uh, things we're already doing internally, which is just doing some planning and coordination work and developing a, at least a draft future land use map um, based on those definitions of statute, just internally as staff, so we have something to react to, something to talk about with our municipalities. We're also going to spend some time trying to develop educational engagement materials to explain this really complicated law in hopefully very uh, succinct, clear terms that most folks can understand. That's going to be a challenge. Step number two is, uh, something that Charlie has already started here this fall. Um, and that's to meet with select boards to talk about what Act One Eighty-One is and, uh, to explain the kind of process that we want to undertake with our municipalities in the spring to develop this or refine this regional future land use map. And so Charlie meets with select boards each fall, reviews the annual report we provide, then we're tackling this a little bit on the end, uh, end of it, really. Trying to understand who to talk to in this how do when we start developing these plans or these maps um, in the spring. Uh, three, this isn't necessarily sequential, but, uh, staff needs to try to define what existing benefits and burdens are here in, in Chittenden County. Um, figure out a process to assess, uh, changes to those benefits and burdens as we map. Um, we have started the map EJ populations already as defined in statute. There are some issues with that I won't get into today, but, um, we may have to do some additional mapping besides what's required by statute because, uh, a lot of, uh, Chittenden County is showing up as, uh, having EJ focused populations, and we frankly just know that's not true, given our demographics, so. Uh, more to come on that. Uh, step four, we're going to review that draft, uh, future land use map, uh, that we developed internally with our municipalities. And we're really going to focus on a couple of different categories of folks. We're going to focus on talking to our municipal boards, our select boards and our planning commissions, hold some workshops with them. Because of the environmental justice requirements, we're also really interested to hear from our municipal boards who are other interested and effective parties, and specifically environmental just, justice populations within their municipality that we should talk to and at least inform about what's happening with these changes. Um, and ideally solicit the feedback on what those changes mean for them and, and, and get a reaction from them, um, and even, even get proposed changes from them. Um, I think the rub here really is that, you know, we're required to do all this outreach to environmental justice populations, but we're also very much constrained by these definitions of statute. And so, um, that's, we, we're recognizing that friction point and, uh, we're going to have to work through that with our municipalities. Uh, step five, we'll revise the plan based on the feedback that we've received in the spring or excuse me, in the winter. Um, we're going to try to seek municipal consensus amongst municipal planning commissions and, and, uh, select boards about what the maps look like. We know that may not be possible, but we're going to try. Uh, step five, I'm sorry, uh, number three there under step five is to talk to municipalities about what are called Tier One B requests. And so, uh, this is a, an action a select board can take where the select board essentially is saying that um, they have a, a, a center area, let's call it a village center area. And, uh, the select board wants to have that area mapped by the RPC as a tier one B area that provides some limited exemptions to Act Two Fifty. I believe it's fifty units. Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's fifty units. Um, and so that is a, that is, you know, we're going to do our mapping work in collaboration with the town, but the town has to make this affirmative request of, of us to map areas as tier one B. Any questions on step four or five?
No, I'll just add that, um, the municipal engagement part of this is going to be so interesting because there's so many different voices on the municipal level about these changes. And, um, I just think it's going to be really important to get as many people out as possible because there, you know, front porch forum, I see in Charlotte so many different views in terms of housing. And, um, so it'll, it'll be interesting.
What I should have said, Dana, to, to address that point, that I'm glad you made that point, is that, you know, in, in working with your municipal staff, your select boards and planning commissions, CCRPC really wants to develop like a customized engagement plan for your municipality. And so I think engagement is going to look pretty different between the Burlington's and the Bolton's of the world. Um, and, you know, I don't think that solves the, the problems you outline, but, you know, we, we want to design a process in each municipality that, uh, fits your needs and hopefully will be successful.
Yeah. Great. Bring it on.
Uh, yeah, yeah. As, as you're hearing this, you're, you're hearing it also. This is going to be a lot of staff hours, a lot of staff time.
I know. That's exactly what I was thinking. I was like, whoa, this is big.
It's really big.
And, and that works, that works, Taylor, as long as, uh, some town doesn't say we don't want any.
So let's talk about that, Jeff. You know, I think, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, who's, who's making the decision here, right? And, you know, we want to be really transparent with our municipalities that at the end of the day, it's the CCRPC board that's adopting this map, right? Um, and when there's, you know, friction points that we hear during this engagement process and we're looking at statute, it's going to be staff that's making a recommendation to the Long Range Planning Committee about what these boundaries are. They're going to make a recognition to the board, the board's going to adopt. Um, so we want to be transparent about that. Um, but at the same time, you know, they to echo kind of what, you know, Charlie's been preaching to us is if we want to make this a really collaborative process and make it as bottom up as possible, like, we don't want to be imposing something against the municipality's will. And so, yeah, Jeff, that's what you said is, is what I'm worried about is, you know, the municipality can't say no, but we do want to hear if there's objections and we want to try to just talk through them in any way we can.
This harkens back to the should versus shall debate that ended up in the, I think it was two thousand meeting where there were what, four hundred people or so at South Burlington High School? And they were not happy. We may run in, you know, I realize the state is telling us what to do, but it could be a rerun of of that time, and that was not fun.
What, um, what, um, maybe Charlie's going to say this, but I hear you, Garrett, um. I think why we're more hopeful it may be smoother here in Chittenden County than in other parts of the state in particular is that our municipalities have done a pretty good job in terms of land use planning. And that, you know, we we have a pretty good base from which to start. You know, I, I'm thinking that for the, I, we haven't done the mapping yet, so I, I, the draft mapping yet, so I don't really know, but I, in my mind, a lot of these new land use typologies and statute match up pretty well with what we're already doing. It's going to be around the edges that we may have some friction points. Um, you know, you know, uh, enterprise districts is something we already have. So those industrial parks, like, they're going to fit right in that category. That's not going to be a big change. It's going to be kind of like the edge of the villages, you know, and, and a lot of our rural municipalities, that's going to be, that's going to be a friction point. Um, you know, probably around some of the more villages on the district in, in a Shelburne, for instance, might be more of a friction point. Um, but I think to the extent that we can here at CCRPC, we want to lean on a lot of local efforts that have happened recently. You know, Shelburne's still going through a big zoning effort now. We want, we want to lean in that, you know, and the maps they've created. Charlotte's going, undergoing a real big master planning process around its villages. We want to kind of lean on those boundaries as much as we can if they, they hit statute or meet those statutory requirements. So I, I don't know if that helps, but, but yeah, Garrett, I hear you.
No, it's true, but another piece that needs to be mentioned is, is that the RPC and the communities had a far more adversarial relationship back then. And Charlie's leadership and staffs and the board have really turned that around to far more people looking at the RPC as being helpful as opposed to difficult. So, you know, it just, you know, this comes under the may you live in interesting times category.
Uh, and I just, uh, I will just interject here, um, Taylor mentioned I've started uh, select board, uh, city council meetings, um, and a, a few of you, I think I've, we've done four of them so far. But one message I'm trying to emphasize, uh, Garrett, thank you for saying that, um, is that, uh, yeah, the RPC is your partner in this. We want to do this in collaboration and support uh, good work, um, but also know, you know, that there may be some rubs that, that, you know, at the edges in a few places that we need to, you know, work together to smooth out. Um, so that is the kind of message, uh, that I've been trying, I don't know, uh, Andy, I was just at the Essex Town Select Board, I don't know, uh, if that came across all right, or Bard, um, or Jeff, you know, um, I can't remember, what, what was the other town I was at, um, but, oh, um, but anyway, that's, well, Colchester, thank you, Jackie. Um, so I don't know, did that, did that message come across okay, or, uh, I was happy to take feedback on the initial messaging, um, about the relationship. All right, see a couple nodding heads.
Did Catherine have a question there?
Yeah, uh, this is kind of quite specific, but the, our, our Conservation Commission is, uh, doing a new, uh, updating its natural resource overlay, uh, mapping, and is that, will that be impacted by this, the, these kind of mappings as well, or are they going to work together?
Good question. It's going to be a lot of, lot of weird timing questions, Catherine. Um, you know, I think we I don't want to say that we're necessarily like beholden to what your, no, we're not. We're, we are not beholden to necessarily like what is in your municipal land use section of your municipal plan, and we're not beholden necessarily to just what your zoning says. For some of these, these districts, they're really, um, particularly the, the planned growth area and the village areas, there's a lot of criteria that needs to be hit beyond just the land use planning you've done municipally. You know, uh, the criteria get into, you know, do you have a complete street standard? The criteria get into, do you have water and wastewater infrastructure? Do, so for, for those categories, I think it's going to be pretty clear what areas are in and out to the extent that they can be clear. Uh, but for the more rural areas, Catherine, um, you know, yeah, timing, you know, we're, I don't have a good answer for you. I have one other complicated, kind of one other complicated thing to add real quick. I think the other thing that, that we need to recognize is that, um, the rural conservation typology is going to be, uh, essentially what's called tier three, uh, in the Act Two Fifty jurisdictional world. And so tier three means those areas that, um, everything in them needs to go to Act Two Fifty. And potentially, potentially, yeah, all right. And the potentially part there is tier three and, and the boundaries of those areas are going to go through rulemaking. And so this new land use review board is going to do a whole rulemaking process about what natural resources are going to be in that area, what kind of geographies, Catherine. And that process of rulemaking is going to happen after we adopt the first iteration of this plan.
Okay.
And so we're likely going to do an amendment, I, I imagine. Charlie, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, or the next time we update the plan, we'll have to show that tier three, but, but I think in the short term, Catherine, I think, you know, we've done quite a bit of the conservation planning, you know, particularly as part of our energy planning.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I think we'll kind So, uh, you know, I think we'll kind of look at what we've already done as part of the, our energy planning. We, there is, right now, we have a very generic rural land use area. Um, I think this new statute is requiring us to kind of divvy that up into three different types of areas. Uh, kind of rural residential, uh, kind of, uh, you know, forest and work, like working lands and then conservation lands. Um, so I'm, I'm hopeful that it's, uh, similar to what we went through with the energy work. Um, and hopefully that's not too different than what your, you know, conservation commission comes up with locally. Um, and that's like, those are the potential rubs where. You know, we've got something and the town may have done something, let's talk through that and see if we can, you know, get to a good spot, um, so. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate tons of issues and also there's not a lot of impact, even if we have different maps. Uh, for those maps, you know, there's no particular implications that I'm aware of. You know, other than regular Act 250, you know, when our maps. When the town plan and the regional plan are a little different, you know, it may cause a property owner to. Have to just reconcile or, or Act 250 will have to reconcile that eventually. Sorry Jeff, we postponed you here for a bit.
No, that's okay. That's okay, um, I just think. Taylor and Charlie and everyone, Chris, the collaboration starts, uh, like now.
Uh huh.
Um, I think in part. Um, there has to be a, a good critical review of what the department housing. And community affairs has produced for the statewide target. And then there has to be a recognition. That, um, commuting patterns don't respect county boundaries. And we got no better example of that than what goes on up here in our northwest part of the state, but it also, it affects other places. So the point being that. Um. An awful lot of whether or not these are going to ga- gain general acceptance. Is the credibility that, that targets themselves have and the way that they were arrived at, and it's not just transparency, it's kind of makes sense. Um, and that's what normally does these things in. Um, and then when we get to the municipal level. I mean, we have to be careful about who says that the city of Burlington has to house all of its workers, for example. Who says that my community needs to house all of its workers, we probably house more than our share of worker. So something has to be done to rationalize the topology here. Um, while still at the same time making progress at. Our housing crisis, which has been in with us now for more than a quarter of a century. It's. It has been here since then, it's gotten worse. And it's going to take, there has to be recognition that it's going to take at least a quarter of a century to get out of it. Um. And so if these targets. Become too aspiration, aspirational. In nature, they're going to meet a higher degree of resistance. Um, and so there has to be some recognition of conditions on the ground, differences in housing. Costs, differences in infrastructure and diamonds between the various commu- municipalities. And what can be reasonably developed without becoming a cost burden on those. Municipalities before you get to whatever the freaking number is. And that'll be a lightning rod once you do it, because there will be. Certain parts of each community that would be triggered by that.
Yeah.
I don't see this going in a good direction in any way, I don't know of anyone. That has ever had a positive experience with housing target.
Here's, here's one thing, go ahead Chris.
I, I'm saying Jeff's point is entirely accurate, I think, as I've said to Charlie many times, the minute you put a map on a table, everybody brings their own Sharpie. And will be constraining or expanding as their personal needs or they want to go, and they feel empowered with that. Map in front of them, uh, to speak to it and to bring that Sharpie, but Jeff's point is exactly true, if there isn't from the top saying that. You know, because you have 50,000 jobs in your community, you need to provide at least 25,000 housing units or. Uh, uh, 40,000 housing units, people aren't going to understand the concept of why Burlington may necessarily need. Uh, to carry a bigger burden, you know, everybody talks about, oh, it's an economic engine, well, at the same time, how much of that economic engine needs to support itself. Versus being, uh, splayed out over, uh, 50 miles and, um, contributing to the environmental damage that goes with it. Oh yeah, quality of life in the 50 mile perimeter, but good point Jeff, thank you, and go on Taylor.
No, and I, and I, to add to that, you know, how, how do we do it in a way to that, you know, some of our rural municipalities are also. Participating in the, in the, the benefits and burdens of meeting part of the target. And so, you know, Jeff, you know, I think our, our, our planning advisory committees. Looked at some of the things you were talking about, you know, particularly around infrastructure capacity. And, you know, where growth can happen in the region without requiring substantial wastewater and water investment. And we didn't do it in a very like precise. Way, to, to be frank, we did it in a pretty general way, and we talked to a lot of public works directors, and we talked champagne water district and. Um. If that, you know, we looked at our existing areas planned for growth and. Without getting the details, because we can get really off the rails here, and we can meet 101 Jeff too, if you want to talk, but I think, um. We got to apply to planning advisory community where it's like, we, we have all this information. It's a little, little like we're in paralysis, but. Here's a simple way where I think we can distill this down into a, and it can be easily understood. And doesn't. And, and honestly. Depends on what our number is, because we're testing, we were testing with a, with a made up number, you know, when we run our models. But when we were testing with that made up number that we think is pretty close to what we're going to get. A lot of those targets in municipalities are about the level of growth that they would see, or that they're seeing currently. It is only in kind of those more core municipalities where it's a little bit higher. Where we've got water and wastewater infrastructure, where we're already funding for growth as a region too. Um, I can't bring that to the bank, I don't know if we're going to get a way higher number. Um. But, uh, we're, we're feeling good about our relatively simple method after looking at a bunch of complicated information. But we can talk.
Um, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer in simplicity if it happens, but not to the detriment of credibility, okay?
Agreed.
And. Honestly, I don't know how we can do targets for Chittenden County. Without talking to Catherine Demetrick up in Franklin County. Without talking to the folks in Addison County and probably even Grand Isle County, and then if you really think about it. Washington County. I mean, and Lowell County, so I don't know how you do this without interacting with six or seven other. County planning agencies and do it in a, in the right way. Because all you've got to do is look at the census commuting data and all those. All those, all those county with their own planning boards are highly integrated with us. And they're going to be sitting there. Concerned. That Chittenden County's got all the jobs and we've got all the bedrooms.
Well, I'm going to quote one number before I kick it over to Charlie to respond to this, but. Now I was just looking at the, the, the LEHD data the other day Jeff, and that's the. Longitudinal employment, something that the census puts out. And so, you know, Chittenden County's got about 100,000 jobs. And about 63 or 64,000 of those are, are Chittenden County folks that. Live and work here. But, you know. 30 plus thousand jobs or 30 plus thousand workers are coming here to work.
And more than 15,000 of them come from Franklin County.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I mean, that. Uh, I mean, that's been, that's been impacting our transportation needs, obviously, um. Looking at things, so it, it's. I, I don't envy the task and, you know, I've already talked to Charlie about trying to help. Um, and I'm glad to do that, um. And I, obviously, the first thing we have to do is as soon as the long-term projections are approved by the capital debt affordability, uh, advisory committee. Um, I can share with you the popu- state population estimates and things like that, so we can start working through what DCHA has already done.
And, uh, just.
DHCA, sorry, Housing and Community Affairs, like.
It's, uh.
Sorry for mispronouncing an acronym.
It's, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development now, now it's DHCD. They, 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 they don't do any affairs, they just do development.
They don't do affairs anymore, okay?
Um, but, um.
And just one important point, just to follow up on Jeff, that, um. That debate, um, between the regional targets is actually going to happen. At DHCD, they're going to give us a statewide target and regional targets, so thankfully, hopefully we are, we are negotiating with our neighbors. Um. And DHCD will.
I, I know that, but that doesn't make me feel any better, because that doesn't mean that DHCD. Knows better than what we could do collaboratively between five or six of us.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, that'll be, uh.
The devil made me do it, only gets you so far. Okay?
Point taken, point taken, cannot, yeah, understand.
Yeah.
Where were we?
Well, I think, uh, I think the message is, uh, yeah, let's all, uh, try to. Uh. Kind of make sure that, you know, we're approaching this with good intentions and believe that others aren't approach, approaching it with good intentions. We know there's going to be pushed back, you know, there's, um, roughly 40% of the state residents don't want to ha- see any growth in Vermont. So there will be reactions, um, and I think Jeff's point about the pace of growth. Um, I've, I've worked in a few different states and when the pace of growth got too high, like it did here in the seventies. We had almost a 3% growth rate in that decade. There was a major reaction, you know, Act 250 and, and other things to, um. Tamp down that growth, it worked, but now, now we're trying to swing the pendulum back, right? Um, so I think it's trying to find that sweet spot of what's, what's a healthy moderate growth rate that is. Um, I'll, I'll use the word sustainable in quotes, um, but that can be sustained, you know, politically and fiscally is a really good question.
Someone else?
I just want to add that finding that sweet spot is going to be, um, likely a really painful process. You know, having been around and worked for Act 250. In the, uh, early eighties. Into the nineties, um. When there was so much growth. And it, um, was so difficult on the regulatory level, and. We don't even have any experience with this new. LURB, and so we're going into something that is going to be. Pretty wild.
Buckle up. Um, I think, uh, I think, uh, to that point, you know, I think. I think you all can help with that. And, you know, I think, first off, we're going to assign. One of the land use planners to be a, a lead in each municipality. And so that'll be your main point of contact, and we'll get you that list when we finalize it, we're still trying to figure out exactly how to divide the labor. Um. And so, you know, I'm hoping that that, that staff lead is going to keep you all in the loop as we work with our municipalities this spring. And, you know, we really want to be available to the directors to understand what's happening in the community, what the temperature is and how the conversation's going. Uh, because you guys have the, that insight, you live in those communities. And so, uh, please let us know how we're doing and how we can do better as we work with our municipalities. Step six, next summer, you know, we're going to have a bunch of consensus on some maps, I think, and some targets, everyone's going to be holding hands, it's going to be great. Uh, be no problems. And then we're going to provide a staff recommendation to the long range planning committee. Uh. We have LRPC kind of make sure we're doing the right thing, see if from a regional perspective, if we're doing anything wrong, if there's any big errors, you know, it, we. We're probably going to do like a formal recommendation too to LRPs or for each one of our communities. Um, and maybe even outline some of what these rubs are going to be. Or, or are in some of these municipalities, so the LRPC understands and we can talk through those issues with the LRPC. So Dana, you're going to be there for that, so you'll, you'll have a front row seat. Um, go ahead Jeff.
The, the last thing is. Um. So what? You provide a whole bunch of targets down to each individual municipality and say. You tell Charlotte they've got to produce. 5,000 housing units in the next. What happens to Charlotte if that doesn't happen? I mean, is there going to be a carrot? Are you going to open up the opportunity to secure more funding for infrastructure development if they accept the challenge? Or are you gonna? You know. Whack them on the wrist? And take away some money if they don't do it, or? What is, i- is, is this just the public education? Effort to say, because the number of people per housing unit has declined so much since 1980, this is how much we need to. Because the housing stock has to work harder for every thousand people we have. And we're just trying to do this to start to chip away at the. Folks that don't want to see anything.
Well, and that's a really good point. And what's even more interesting is that Charlotte doesn't have any septic capacity. Per se.
Little bit, little bit, little bit.
There's a little bit in the West Village.
Uh, you see the fight's already started.
And, you know, that's a, that's a big issue, how, how is that going to be distributed and? All that, but. It's going to, it's going to get kind of wild.
Yeah.
I mean, especially in our communities that don't have any septic.
Yeah.
Are you going to enforce housing targets when there's nowhere to, or septic?
Can we talk about that for a minute, there, uh, to Jeff's point, there, there is no, there's no gun to anybody's head, there's no axe coming down. That this is my sense of the legislators' conversation about housing targets. Has been more, I think, a little bit to your, your second idea there Jeff, that this is a little bit more to inform policy. Um, so, you know, if the legislature's not seeing housing growth happen, uh, you know, in a healthier way. Then they will, you know. Turn some other policy levers that they have. I, I don't know if that's funding or regulatory or, uh, what it might mean, but. The primary thing going on here is not really the housing targets, it's the map. The map is. The important piece for, uh, Act 250 exemption areas. So what is going on is much more of a, more of the carrot. Uh, conversation going on, I'm trying to, um, you know, provide regulatory relief where the municipality wants to have growth, where the region wants to have growth. Um, so that's the primary thing, and then, you know, the, the target, I'm not, I'm actually, I've actually been wondering if we should ask the legislature to change it to more of a goal. You know, and kind of like soften just the terminology a little bit. Um, which is more of my sense. Um, the only, and Taylor, we should dig into this a little bit more, I think the only potential implication. Of, uh, a target for municipality is if the municipality is really. Uh, really refusing to do anything to have housing growth in their municipality. Um. And they're asking us to approve their town plan. I think we could get into a little rub of like, you know. Yeah, okay, the town plan meets the requirements, but their planning process, like what they're doing, isn't really. Meeting the objectives of the plan, um, or those housing goals, so. Um, but I think we're kind of some years away from that, um, there's no immediate consequences, um, and I think. We'll be kind of working on this, Jeff, I think that's a really good point, because I, I think trying to scare people into good behavior. As a losing tactic, uh, or threaten them. Um, so I think we got to do this in a more positive way. Um. Was it, you get more, more flies with honey or something like that, can you remember how that saying goes? Um, so I think we'll be trying to, uh, go more in that direction, I'm sorry Bard, I made you wait in a while here.
Oh, it's okay, uh, Charlie, you'll remember, I think, that at Monday's select board meeting here in Richmond, and. Richmond is perhaps unlike the metropolitan cities. But is probably like a number of other modestly sized towns around the state outside of Chittenden County. Um, where the real problem is water sewer infrastructure, that's been mentioned. And specifically, people in the room said the legislature should give us money, and you can't make this stuff up. We're like a million and a half dollars short, everybody, it's another classic example of a plan that everybody agrees that somebody else should pay for. To expand water and sewer. Um, and so. It, there are opportunities for housing, and it's basically in our small town, like some other small towns. It's either infill or expanding water sewer around the margins of the existing water sewer service. And it's not huge money, it's like millions, it's not tens of millions or hundreds of millions. And so, part of what it looks like for me, and again, sort of. Perhaps skewed by my observation and experience here in Richmond is. I think a modest amount of money, almost like a grant program to extend water sewer in exchange for housing development. I think there are opportunities there that are sort of the tipping point for. That kind of infrastructure from the legislatures, because nobody in town wants to pay for it.
Yep. Agree. I'll add one thing to that Bard, in, in that. You know, a lot of the clean water state revolving fund monies that are available for wastewater infrastructure. Are really, the state is really targeted spending that within. Village center designations. village center designations, downtown designations, these relatively small geographies. And that with this law, with this new map where we're doing planned growth areas, we're like, we have this expectation that water and sewer is going to be there or already is there. I think it's going to take some changes to like state rules too, related to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, like we can get to a place where we can prioritize this broader geography. Where there's a plan to have growth in housing there. And so that's something I think that I'm thinking about in the back of my head for the next couple of years, working with state agencies is to, you know, look at how they're allocating their dollars and where they're allocating their dollars, you know, geographically, so we can make sure for a place like Richmond, that's really topographically constrained. Um, that we can, we can get water and sewer a little bit out of those villages, as long as we've got good planning in place, we've got good zoning in place. Um, that sort of thing.
And I just, I'll repeat, I think there are many towns situated along rivers with
Yeah.
slopes around them that are going to be really similar to Richmond. You know, that's sort of conceptual, but um, I think there are examples and then you go, there's little pathways where it's high enough, but low enough where you could actually expand. Um, and I think that sort of map targeting, um, I don't know how it'll play out, but it seems to me that there are probably the examples to numerous towns around the state where that would be true.
I'll be planning on telling Gore folks that they can expect to be required to build the twenty-five story condo tower at the top of the gap.
But it's just one.
I mean, someone's going to pay a lot of money for that carrot. So, I mean, you'll find a ticker.
I mean, the views will be tremendous.
I've taken up a lot of time, so I'll just wrap up by saying that, you know, well, we'll be bringing something to you hopefully by summer twenty twenty-five for you guys to look at. Before we start the real formal adoption process next fall. Um, step seven, we also want to do some evaluation of the process we did. I don't know what that looks like yet, but we do want to hear from our constituent municipalities about how we did, you know, going through this really complicated process to develop these maps. Um, couple other, uh, yeah, next steps, we're going to work with, we're going to present this plan to L R P C and pack in October to see if they have any comments or questions. We'll amend our plan as necessary. Charlie is already meeting with city councils and select boards to do outreach and education. And we're going to continue to work on these regional housing targets. Once we get this big state number to make sure that the method we came up with is uh still going to work. Uh, one other thing I want to note is that there are a bunch of interim exemptions to act two fifty right now. And there's this handy interim exemption map viewer. It talks about all the different exemptions exist and how many units and those sorts of things. Just Google uh act two fifty interim exemptions. This map should be the first thing that pops up. If you have questions, uh, feel free to reach out to me. I'm, I'm happy to talk to you, or better yet, reach out to the active district coordinator. Uh, lastly, if you have any complaints, reach out to them. If you have any questions, reach out to me. Uh, other Ecos plan updates, like I said, uh, the plan is out to our formater. Um, so, you know, we're going to kind of get this plan lined up to look pretty and great and awesome. And then we're going to go work on this map and these targets next year. And then do a little amendment to the actual plan itself in the summer. And our website is well underway. Um, and Melanie, who is here, is actually presenting the website at the New York Conference, which is the D I S planners conference next week, because we think it looks really great. Uh, with that, any other comments or questions, uh, for me?
Yeah, unpack that acronym, the New York Conference.
I cannot unpack that one, Melanie. You are going to have to unpack that one.
The abbreviation is Northeast Arc User Conference. The Arc refers to a geometry type that's used in G I S.
Very good. I love that stuff. Mapping.
And I'll just, um.
Get giddy with it.
If, can the, the interim, just a little bit of data I got recently on those interim act two fifty exemptions. Um, I don't, you, you may have heard me complain over time that like the state designation program only covered zero point three percent of the state land area. The interim exemptions, um, because they are buffers around the designated villages and downtowns uh, in the transit corridors in Chittenden County, um, now include about two percent of the state land area. And partly I'm saying this out loud to you because, um, you know, there's going to be pushback on growth, but you were really, nobody's trying to pay over paradise here. This is a pretty strategic, limited geographies, um, for act two fifty exemptions to try to incentivize growth where towns have already planned for it. So, um, just thought I'd throw out those, a couple of numbers for you. Um, I, I know in testimony during the session, you know, it was like, you know, at, at most, it's still, no matter where we come up with this plan and these maps, I'm thinking at most it's going to be single digit percentages of this whole state that are part of these, um, growth areas. So, anyway, I hope that is helpful.
Very much. Thank you. Thank you, Taylor. Um, we're going to check in and see if uh Green Mountain Transit, there is Clayton Clark has, uh, shown or no?
He has not. Um, I am just, um, put a note in the chat, uh, apologies. Um, and it's very weird because I've talked to him a couple of times in the last week, including Andy at your meeting Monday night. Um,
Well, he's probably been unavoidably, uh,
And I think he's also been doing a lot of meetings, uh, so.
He may be, maybe suffering licking his wounds from last night.
Yeah, I know. They had a couple of public or public meetings yesterday. Um, I, I put in that, uh, my comment here in the chat, a link to the webpage on the GMT website that talks about their service reduction plan. So, um, you can at least start to familiarize yourself and then we'll try to see if we can get them at a future meeting.
Excellent.
Apologies, uh, for our future selves when we overload a board meeting.
Well, uh, we spent additional time on Ecos Plan, which was fruitful, especially considering the legislative updates that we're going to be uh, putting into place in the Ecos Plan. So it's nice to be able to see how we've incorporated them, made them part of it and the heavy lifting that will go on next summer, when we, uh, uh, start to work through that. Uh, number eight, we have an equity update.
Yeah, um, Ann Nelson is, uh, celebrating her, uh, wedding this, uh, well, these, at the end of this week and this weekend. So, uh, she's, she's off. Uh, so, um, but she did send me some notes, uh, to provide an update. And I'm going to ask Emma to back me up if I miss something. Um, but, um, we, we've, uh, brought on a couple interns to help Ann Nelson, um, U V M student and another, uh, master student who's also an E A C, the Equity Advisory Committee member. Um, and really a lot of it is related to what we were just talking about, um, in terms of the engagement for the Ecos Plan. Um, another, uh, big task in front of us for the next year is starting to work on the public participation plan. Um, and particularly around stipend policies. Um, so we've had an interim stipend policy for about ten years. Um, we're going to look at trying to update that. Um, and, you know, we were, I, I don't know. So I think we were kind of leading edge, not, not the bleeding edge, but the leading edge when we did that ten years ago. Um, we're, um, I think going to be able to update this and still, I think, stay. Um, and it, it's pretty consistent with other things that are being discussed at the state. Um, you know, at the transportation equity framework, uh, with V Trans and also with the environmental justice law that passed a few years ago that is being worked on, uh, by A and R staff. So, um, stay tuned. Uh, that's just a heads up that Ann Nelson wanted to note that she's starting to work on that. Um, the E A C has, um, spent some time really focusing on what they want to focus on. Uh, so they've got an updated, uh, committee charge and purpose. Um, a big part of their work is going to be the public participation plan. Um, s- supporting staff with community engagement around our different projects. Uh, and getting, uh, probably a little bit more involved in the U P W P process. Um, so, um, and this next week they meet and, uh, Lady Marshall will be at that committee meeting, uh, Kristen heads up and Bruce heads up. Um, uh, they'll be providing, uh, some more detail on how the U P W P process works. Um, Emma and Ann Nelson are working on updating the board member handbook. Uh, with the idea that, um, some of that code of conduct language at the executive committee uh, voted on, uh, as part of our personnel policy for staff, uh, will take, you know, some parts of it that might be applicable to public meetings, um, and kind of bring that into the board member handbook. Um, and I think we'll probably bring that to you as something to act upon. Um, because I think, you know, we'd like to, you know, have some policy of what's, uh, appropriate behavior in our committee meetings, et cetera. Um, to kind of balance both sides, you know, both, uh, protect staff and also, um, make sure things are just, uh, happening civilly. Um, we're also, she's also working on some, uh, connections with indigenous communities. Um, and, um, how that might play into our plan as we have to do that environmental justice engagement. Um, and, uh, working on implementing the in, the personnel policy code of conduct um, and a staff retreat and some ongoing training on that restorative, um, justice work with the, uh, Community Justice Center. So, anyway, that was, that was a lot. Happy to take any questions on that and and make Emma respond, but, um, sorry, Emma, that was a joke. Any, any questions on what Ann Nelson's working on? Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Kristen, for volunteering to join that committee. Appreciate it. Chris, you want me to keep going?
Yes, if you don't mind, we're on to the chair and executive director updates. I don't have an update, I'm afraid. And I just appointed myself to the planning advisory committee.
Noted. Yeah, congratulations. Um, and so the first thing, and we've already mentioned it a few times now, but, um, I have scheduled just about all of the town and city select board meetings or, and city council meetings uh, to just provide our annual report, uh, for those of you who are newer board members. Um, we do a few pages of an annual report each year documenting what we did, uh, in each town last, in the last fiscal year. Um, this year, there's an additional document, which is kind of a pared down version of what Taylor just presented you. Um, kind of just reviewing pretty quickly what's in the act one eighty-one law. Um, and that we're going to, we're going to have some engagement with our towns in the coming months on the Ecos Plan and the land use maps. Um, the second note here, item B, sorry, any, any questions on those meetings with your, your boards or anything? Um, four down, fourteen to go. Um, hu- housing issues, I just want to let you know that, um, some conversation uh, amongst municipal managers, um, and, uh, the mayor from Burlington uh, has resulted in us, uh, well, I'm trying to do a little bit to be a neutral facilitator for some conversation on the housing issues. Um, I don't know if you've read any news today, but, um, there was apparently a, a, a meeting of a bunch of municipalities in Mount Pilier today, asking the state to help with the homeless issue. Um, that it's, it's really the same issue. There's a lot of concern amongst the municipalities about what happens next. Um, so, um, just to let you know, um, we're not directly involved, but just trying to facilitate some conversation, um, and play a convening role. Any questions, reactions on that? And yeah, Clayton just sent me an apology for missing the meeting. So, um, and, uh, just, the next thing is just to note that, um, there is a religious holiday on the third Wednesday of October. And so, um, the executive committee decided to move the meeting to Tuesday. Um, and I'm hoping that works for everyone or just about everyone. Um, so October fifteenth, um, so, but underline the Tuesday in your brain. Um, and I think, uh, Emma, are you okay with this? I think Emma is probably going to send an email to everyone to see if it would be helpful to you to not just get an email. You know, which we, we will still send an email with the meeting packet and the, the Zoom link, et cetera. But wondering if it would be helpful for you to get a meeting appointment, uh, those of you that are keeping digital calendars. Um, so with, is that, is that okay to ask you? I guess we'll ask that and see what kind of response we get. Um, seen a couple.
I don't want to be asked.
You, you just want the appointment?
Yeah, uh, just go ahead and send it. You don't have to accept it.
That, that is one, one, uh, good answer. Should, should we just send an appointment? Yeah, Chris, I don't know if you, this is where you should step in and facilitate, Chris.
Well, it, it's not costing an increased postal stamp. I, I'm sure we can just send the appointment. Uh, I know it doesn't necessarily work for me where I
Right.
Have complained, but, uh, I'm not actively on Outlook or so. Catherine?
Uh, I don't, uh, do digital calendars. I do paper.
Yeah, noted. Yeah, and I read this, not the same thing works for everybody. So, um, and I think we're just trying to cover the bases. I think it's part of what happened with Clayton, right? He, he got an email, but I'm sure he's got a lot going on right now. And it just kind of got lost in his inbox. Um, so, um, and especially I'm a little bit worried about next month because the meeting's on a Tuesday rather than our traditional Wednesday. So, we will set an appointment for the next meeting and and then you'll let us know how that worked for folks or not.
And a toggle reminder on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting that we'll see you Tuesday.
All right.
Probably be very helpful. At least that's the way I'd, if it's.
See, Emma making a note on that idea. Good. Thank you, Emma. Um, the last thing, um, I would just want to note to see if this is also working for you. We reformatted the agenda a little bit. Um, thank you, Emma, for that. Um, but we're a little less specific about, um, individual meeting minutes from different committees. So in item eleven here, you'll note that we just have a link for you to go to that committee page. Is that okay? I just want to make sure, um, I kind of highlighted on the agenda that, you know, uh, we're still including the minutes in your packet. Um, but there's just a link to the committee meeting if you, uh, or each committee page, if you'd prefer to look at it, you know, um, that way. Does that work? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you to staff for simplifying our agenda a little bit. Much appreciated. I think that's all I've got, Chris, unless somebody has, uh, any questions for me.
No, it works for me. I hope it works for everybody else. It certainly deep flatters a, a lot of it. Okay, um, looking for item ten, any members items that they would like to bring forward? You'll note that, uh, in October, I'll get to you in a minute there, Mike. Thank you. Um, but we're going to add a debrief for, um, the regional dispatch, uh, Michael Bissonette had asked for on a previous session. So we put that on our agenda for, uh, Tuesday, October fifteenth. So we're next to that. So, Mike?
Yeah, Charlie, just a quick question. Just wondering what the, uh, if you can update the schedule for exit sixteen? The double diamond? Exit sixteen, I'm, I'm going to defer to Amy if she wants to jump on that one. Or Elaine? She doesn't want to. Okay, um, so to my knowledge, um, they've taken the hiatus this year uh, to allow Winuski to work on their Main Street project. Uh, without making that situation more complicated, um, but that they are going to pick up construction next year. Uh, so next spring, exit sixteen construction should resume. Uh, my understanding is that Main Street Route seven and Winuski will be back open to two lanes. Although they will be working on the edges of the road, you know, the sidewalks and things like that. Um, so there, yeah, what, uh, Mike, I don't know what to say. There's a lot of construction going on in Winuski and around Winuski. Um, and then I think when those projects finish up, um, you know, maybe the bridge will start construction, right? Um, We should only hope, Charlie. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what to hope for. I'm, I'm hoping those businesses on Main Street, um, survive this process. And I know a, a lot of them have suffered this year, but I, at least I, I'm glad to hear that there was coordination between the two projects. Yeah, I think V Trans and the city, I think, really did have some, uh, good conversation about, uh, sequencing to make sure they, uh, were making it more challenging than need be.
And I can, I re- reach out to V Trans and get a little bit more details, Mike, and just forward it to you.
Great. Thanks, Elaine.
Spring of twenty twenty-five and you can get the inside track on a ferry across the Winuski River to maximize revenue downtown while the bridge is under construction too. Just a thought, Mike. You can reactivate something from the eighteen hundreds. Uh, Bart, go ahead. Uh, Charlie, you remember the other sort of salient comment at Monday's meeting was about the three acre stormwater rule? And we were pondering, is there a benefit to doing some kind of inter-town discussion? And to be clear, for Richmond, there's one area where it, the development is old enough that it doesn't have a homeowners association. It hits the three acre threshold, but there's no there there. And I suspect that may exist in other towns. So I know the state wants the towns.
And I suspect there may exist in other towns. So I know the state wants the town to step in and the town's attorney is like, don't step in. There are just some complexities about um the ownership of those things. And it's probably, again, for sort of the medium-sized towns, it might impact, I don't know, potentially Bolton or um Shelburne, Heinsberg. Yeah, I think it's probably a less relevant issue for the larger towns, but that's just a question and how we pose that to the membership towns. Is there any interest in dealing with some of the issues across the town versus every town dealing with these oddities uh by themselves?
Yeah, thanks for that reminder, Bart. Yes, so just in the last week, you know, I was at Shelburne and at Richmond, and this three acre permit was a major topic on both select board agendas. Um, and so, yeah, are folks aware of, you know, or or think there might be interest in having a multi-town conversation with D E C about this? Um, and I'm kind of looking at, yeah, and Bart, I think your assessment is right, like the M S four towns, it's, you know, where they already have a townwide stormwater permit. It's, it seems like less of an issue. They're able to figure out how to accommodate this, but the the towns that are outside of those M S four towns, uh, I'm expecting maybe hearing some issues from your residents?
Well, in I didn't raise my hand, but in Jericho, I mean, that is an issue because it uh we just recently learned when they um, our town, uh, our consulting engineer looked at uh, which is going towards Richmond is the Sunset Ridge area. It's only a few houses, but it because the road and stuff and we're responsible for it is hits that three acre. And we're going, oh, boy, okay. It it's a, it's a learning issue um for um other members of the board as well as the the town administrator.
Chris, it's Bart again. I'm thinking maybe one approach is to email the planning staff in those sort of not not metropolitan towns by a handful and say, is there an interest or a need for that?
Uh, to bring it up at the PAC committee?
Maybe, yeah. I mean, assuming people attend. I don't know. Is that pretty well attended?
Or we can email those folks. Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Dana?
Yeah, different topics. I'd like to keep the um G M V um T cutbacks on our agenda because I think it's a really big deal. And um, you know, we're hearing about why the cutbacks are happening in terms of dollars and how it's just not feasible, you know, not feasible for them on a financial basis, but what's going on in terms of ridership? And um, and what's behind that is really interesting to me, and I just like us to keep following that.
Absolutely. Um, is there, we won't know, Charlie, if uh Clayton would be able to make the October meeting?
Yeah, I'm just just texting him right now.
Right, okay. And and I agree with Dana. Absolutely. It's disheartening to see this. But in a certain sense, you uh recognize that when the legislature pulled the rug out from underneath the free fares that we've enjoyed since the beginning of COVID and we had hoped would persist. Um, but found otherwise. Uh, and I just think that's going backwards uh in so many different ways. I think where we had a a foot in the door for Green Mountain Transit to be able to be uh useful to the communities that it serves uh to watch them suddenly have to be constrained by the fiscal issues that the aren't really their own doing. Um, it it's not supporting what we want to be doing for our future in my mind. Bart?
Um, I, this is another example of a great idea that somebody else should pay for. Um, so that's where I just feel stuck. This is an example. Everybody thinks it should happen, but who wants to pay for it? Um, I think that is a core conundrum. So it seems to me the fine, understanding the financing, reviewing the financing with Clayton as well as ridership. And I think from what I understand, they're trying to make rational judgments about um, the cost of um a route and the ridership. But, you know, s- it's at the individual level, some people's plans are just gonna implode. If I, if you relied on GMT to get to work every day on a route that was not heavily used, um, it sure feels like sort of Armageddon, I guess.
I absolutely think the legislature shouldn't be taking up this topic more. Catherine?
I want to follow up with what Bart has just said. I mean, granted, turns out the Jeffersonville commuter is one of the most expensive routes because it doesn't have a huge, it used, when it started, it had pretty decent ridership, but the pandemic changed all that, but there's still a core group of people that really use it to go to work. And without it, they're not sure because they're, you know, it's they're on a tight budget, have one car. So somebody goes to work, somebody goes to school or or, you know, um, and we have community members who have been, you know, um, saying, what can we do? What can you do? Why, uh, we need this. We can't, we can't go to work if we don't have this.
Yep.
And so, you know, how do you, how do we fix it to, you know, maybe a microtransit or something for out there, whatever, because uh, you know, the the hand, the people is it's necessary.
Andy?
Yeah, Essex, the the number ten bus that goes uh through town, not a lot of ridership on it, but it gives us access to uh S S T A. And and which is actually, we pay more for S S T A than we pay for our fixed routes. And so that's the best, the big population for Essex that's gonna get hit, some of the folks that need drives from that.
So if they don't have the number ten bus, they don't have to provide the S S T A, is that correct?
That's that's right. You got, you gotta be you're only, you're only eligible for S S T A if you're three quarters of a mile from a a fixed route. So so all of our, all of our senior housing is on a bus route today. So all all of those folks will no longer have access to uh transportation. We have an Essex, we have an Essex senior bus that we operate, but it only operates within Essex. You can't get to Tilly Drive, you can't get to the hospital, you can't. So, yeah, all those, that that's that's the big issue for us is the loss of the ADA.
Wow, and that would be true for Williston as well. Catherine? You're muted. Catherine, you're still muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm glad you mentioned it. I didn't realize that that was, because if we lose that, we'll lose the S S T A which people use because we have Jerry Hill Housing, you know, senior housing and there a lot of housing off of Starbird, which all are next to, you know, Route fifteen. And people also rely on that. I mean, it's kind of tragic.
Taylor?
I would just ask that board members keep this conversation in mind when we talk about the regional future land use maps in a couple of months. And uh the need for housing on transit routes. Um, because housing helps support transit routes and makes them more economically feasible.
Right? Yeah, that's, yeah, that's some of the long-term game. I also note, uh, Clayton did, uh, he's a member of this board, also a member of the Equity Advisory Committee, and he came to that meeting at uh the end of August. Um, and um, what you were, what you were all just saying was pretty mild compared to what the Equity Advisory Committee members were saying. Um, out of their concern, you know, for um, you know, new Americans being able to access jobs or low-income residents being able to access jobs and just the 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 big equity picture here of um, you know, folks that are really dependent on those, that bus service. So um, they were um very interested in um supporting GMT to do something positive here. So and Bart, I will follow up with the planners on the three acre conversation, see if there's interest there.
And then uh, in addition, is there anything that the other uh regional planning commissions are doing along three acres stormwater, Charlie? If there's any check-in you can do on that?
Yeah, I'll I'll check. I have, uh, we just had our monthly meeting and um it was a minor issue uh in a couple of regions, but not, I don't think they have as many subdivisions as we do.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Nobody was uh orchestrating conferences. Got it?
Yeah, not not yet.
Okay, um, so Mike got his answer on the exit sixteen next spring. And uh, we're gonna do the three acre stormwater with the uh uh district directors of planning and zoning.
Yep.
And uh transit routes.
Yeah, Clayton has agreed to come to the tw- uh to the October fifteenth meeting.
Awesome. I think we're all set. Anyone else with a members, Dana, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that when um local planners are trying to uh write their comprehensive municipal plans and they're trying to defend density and um and local, providing local public transit is a big deal um in terms of why it's attractive. And it's um, to the extent that that's gonna be cut back is going to affect the argument that local planners are gonna have for compact dense housing.
That's a great point. I know that it can also affect the yeah. So it impacts the density. Other thoughts? Okay, as pointed out, we have a new uh format and your item eleven, the committee liaison activities and reports of the eight of them are links. And so I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn to our next meeting. Thank you. Till Tuesday, October seventeenth.
Tuesday, October seventeen.
Uh, fif- fifty, darn.
Excuse me.
Tuesday, October fifteenth. So thank you for the motion to adjourn. Garrett, I'll take your second, or Benjamin, I'll take your second. And all those in favor, please raise your hands, say hi, hit the leave meeting button. And anyone who opposes or stands, please stick around and let us know.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Three pages. Doing the more. Hey, carry on.